Good evening, everyone, fellow citizens. My name is Anthony Smith and we have Rowan Concerned Citizens and we're having our first ever virtual town hall meeting. Joined with me is my co-facilitator Dustin Wilson and we're joined with an esteemed panelist. We have Kena Foster, or Kena Grubb, excuse me, with Rowan Helping Ministries, Executive Director of Rowan Helping Ministries. We're also joined by Joe Polich. He is a Research Fellow at the Center on Poverty and UNC Chapel U. Tonight's topic is, we're calling it the Beyond Poverty Mashup. And what we'll be discussing this evening is two things mashed together. One, asking the basic question, what exactly is poverty in our community? And two, what are some ways that it can be addressed or may already be being addressed in our community? And so, like always, Rowan Concerned Citizens is concerned about empowering local citizens and seeing local citizens engage in local issues and areas that affect them directly. So, we're excited this evening to begin our conversation. And as some of you know, a couple of months ago, there was an article that went viral on social media locally here, and it was reposted by the Salisbury Post. I'm gonna put the headline up here. You see that? It was a Salisbury Post article that reposted another article from Yahoo News service that listed Salisbury as number five was soaring poverty, but some say the study doesn't show a full picture. Now, I'm not here to justify whether that's completely true or not, but it did raise a number of concerns, it raised a lot of conversations, created a lot of conversations, and energized a lot of people that became deeply interested in that conversation. So tonight, we're gonna have a discussion with Joe Polich and with Ms. Grubb about these issues, how they impact us locally in Rowan County. Just a couple of things I want to throw out to you, just sort of housekeeping things. Dustin Wilson will be fielding questions, so if you're watching us live right now, what you can do is post questions in the comments section of the YouTube channel with Rowan Concerned Citizens. Just post questions, he'll fill those, and I'll be the one that will be engaging the panelists with the issues. We're broadcasting for only an hour, so there's a lot there, we may not get to all the questions, although we do find your voice critical in this conversation. So, this broadcast also will be recorded for future viewing, for those who may not miss us. So if you've got family or friends, neighbors, fellow citizens that may miss this broadcast, they can check us out later on. So, to begin with, just a basic question, before we actually dive into the poverty question, Ms. Grubb and Mr. Polich, I want to ask you on a personal note, from your own personal story, when somebody says to you, "Hey, why don't you come and join this conversation about poverty?", what makes you want to be a part of that conversation? What brings you here personally?
Which one do you want to start?
Mr. Polich.
All right. Great. I'll really try to be brief. My experience with poverty began as a young child. I was a very lucky, a very lucky person growing up. But like many other people who find themselves in poverty, under circumstances outside of my family's control, we found ourselves struggling through a short-term version of poverty that wasn't as devastating as the type of poverty that other people experienced, but was nonetheless very eye-opening. A feeling of gratitude towards what I had and the experience of not having combined to a perspective that I feel obligated to give to others that are experiencing this thing. I trained as a social worker and as a lawyer in order to be better at that, and I find that many conversations around poverty come from a perspective of negativity, focusing on the negative, and instead of also being combined with an empowering perspective. So whenever someone says, "Hey, let's talk about poverty", I'm happy and looking to be a part of it.
Mr. Grubb.
Not sure.
There you go.
That's good.
Getting ready to ask you to start back over again, because it sounded like it was good, so.
......................................................................................................................................................................................................... Rowan Helping Ministries, in addition to trying to meet basic needs to help people who live in poverty every day, we want to educate and empower people to find solutions to help move into a life that isn't living on the edge of financial crisis. And when I look at what poverty is and the people that we help, that not only are people struggling who are in poverty, but people that are 52, 50% of poverty level, struggle every day to meet the needs, and it's occurring in this community. If you look at, for example, our county that we are going to help now compared to five years, or even going back to 2004 before it closed, we've just seen this increasing need of who are struggling to make ends meet, want to be a part of that.
So, I think we still got some issues with the sound with Kena, so, you know, tonight, you know, a part of the mashup is to give a really big picture of what poverty is, and you know, hoping that people can walk away with, okay, have a more rich, more, because it's such a complex issue, but just to the average citizen to make those daily decisions about where to help or where to get help, you know, being to understand that. So, I know there's been recently some conversation about redefining or expanding what poverty is in our society, and I just wanted to straightaway ask the most basic question, what exactly is poverty in the United States? Or is that just a national or a state or just defined locally? What exactly is poverty?
Is poverty in the United States? Is that question to me, Anthony?
Oh, yes. You're sorry, Joe.
Sorry. Don't want to step on any toes, you know. I'll start with maybe a quick comment about how poverty is measured. We typically refer to a poverty rate as a number. And right away, if you're describing an experience as a number, you know you're already missing out on a lot of the definition, but even that, quite a lot, as the official poverty rate is typically a number of dollars divided by a number of people living within a house. It's very basic and it's very rudimentary, and that's why the federal government uses it, because it's simple. This equation does not get changed from Salisbury to Charlotte to California. It's the same basic number divided by the same number of people. So, I give that critique, and I know that in this conversation, I'm gonna use that number a few times.
So, let me understand what you just said right there. So basically, in our society right now, we use a universal definition of what poverty is, or how we measure it, and we apply it to all situations locally?
Right, right. When someone refers to the official poverty rate, which is the number used to determine eligibility for federal benefits, that number that we have in North Carolina, or in Salisbury, or in Charlotte, about $27,000 for a family of four, that's the same number that's used in New York City, rural Oklahoma, northern California, which immediately springs to mind all sorts of problems with the summer, because we all know that it takes a different amount of resources to live in different places. So right off the bat, you know, it's kind of an odd way to talk about poverty when you go to the poverty rate.
Oh, wow. So like, can you give us like a just down-to-earth like picture of what poverty looks like in North Carolina?
Okay. The story of poverty in North Carolina has a couple of recent trends. Historically, 50, 60, 70 years ago, economically, we were pretty, as usual from other southern states, the usual suspects that we compare to Alabama. Eventually, you know, we kind of progressed a little more quickly than other southern states, but what you're very familiar with in Rowan County is the eventual closing of textile or furniture or manufacturing plants. So, the most recent trends regarding poverty is the story of people that really want to work, people that have recently been working, still consider themselves very valuable or productive people potentially, but are really struggling to find a way to make those ends meet. In North Carolina, we also kind of consider ourselves, or we kind of conceive poverty as a primarily rural phenomenon, but most of our research shows that while on the countywide level, rural counties have higher poverty rates than urban counties, we know that at the census tract level, and this is true for Salisbury as well, there are census tracts or neighborhoods that have very high concentrations of poverty within city limits.
Can you give me an example of that?
We imagine, and it's sort of backed up by the research, that Durham County, Mecklenburg County, Wake County, because we look at so many statistics through a county lens, we consider them to be very wealthy counties, but when you look at neighborhood levels, specific census tracts in Durham, or Wake, or Charlotte, those neighborhoods will have much higher rates of poverty than any of the rural counties. For example, in Salisbury, and I just looked this up today, Census Tract 504, which is, looking at this map, it looks like west-central Salisbury, their poverty rates are much, much, much higher than the county in general. And that's sort of a pattern that's not just unique to North Carolina, but in the US as well, that you have these pockets of very intense persistent poverty.
Okay. So, you know, I know there's a longstanding, you know, conversation about, you know, causes of poverty, and I'm not sure if you want to get into that or not, but, you know, I know that different groups, racial groups, ethnic groups are affected by poverty in different ways statistically. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure. There are a lot of ways that you can look at different groups demographically and look at poverty, and if you look at poverty and you don't look at the different rates of poverty for either racial groups or age groups particularly, then you're not really looking at the issue very carefully at all. We know that the unemployment rates for African-Americans is usually double that of white people, and that stayed true during the most recent recession. It stayed true when white employment went from 4% to 8%, black unemployment also doubled, so it was still maintaining that ratio. We also know that the unemployment rate for white people started decreasing more quickly than it did for black people. If you want to get into the root causes of that, that's another long conversation, but it's definitely part of the poverty conversation.
Right. And that, I mean, that's part of a longstanding trend that goes back for decades, correct? I mean, that's, you know, that kind of disproportion.
Right. Right. And we can, you know, we can talk about direct workplace discrimination, we can talk about wage discrimination, we can talk about the history of funding some schools and not funding other schools, or the flight of, you know, richer families and children to schools that, you know, weren't open to everybody. I mean, there's several factors there, but the fact remains that poverty rates across different ethnic groups is still different. And, you know, one story that has emerged from our most recent research is that the poverty rates for Native Americans has caught up and exceeded the poverty rates for white, black, and Latino people just in the last few years. I haven't figured out why, but that's what happened out of this most recent recession.
Well, so, for those who have been watching, we lost Kena Foster, I think her signal went out, I think Dustin's trying to bring her back in, back into the conversation. She actually just emailed me saying she was trying to get back in, but she wasn't able to. You know, it'd be nice to have her a part of the local, you know, local manifestation of her trying to address poverty. Hopefully, you know, just keep trying to bring her back in. So, with the recession, so, those disproportions, those, this imbalance, who's represented poverty-wise along racial, ethnic lines, was exacerbated or worse increased by the recession, right? I mean, it kind of just amped it up, those disproportions?
Right, right. I mean, you would almost assume that if the overall unemployment rate, say, went up by 50%, that each group would kind of be affected the same way, but it seemed to amplify the difference in unemployment rates and poverty rates as well, so that the ratios stayed the same. It wasn't that everyone's unemployment rate increased by one or two, you know, the ratio, the multiplier was similar, so that greater proportions of people that were already suffering larger unemployment rates, you know, fell behind even more. The recovery within the state has been uneven pretty clearly by region, you know, areas of the state that have, you know, the RTP, or the Triangle, or Charlotte, their unemployment rates and poverty rates are recovering much more quickly than eastern and western rural counties. And, you know, knowing what we know about North Carolina, that means that large African-American populations in the rural east and the rural west are going to catch up less quickly than the Triangle and the Triad and Mecklenburg County as well. So, you know, it was, in many ways, it was an uneven recession, and the recovery has also so far been uneven.
Right. Because this is so important, because, as citizens, because one of the things about our group is, we really are about fostering conversation among citizens.
Right.
You know, being willing to collaborate with those who are in local power, local government, and, you know, and being in conversation with them, but at the same time, you know, as citizens, you know, being, having honest conversation when poverty numbers are thrown out, but then we're told that we are recovering, you know, and then the question becomes, who are we? Is it really just some of us, or none of us?
It's probably something in the middle. I think the, one of the barriers to having that conversation is the way that many of the numbers are quite misleading. One of the worst statistics we use is the way that we calculate the unemployment rate. So, the situation we have now is that our unemployment rate as a state is drifting back towards pre-recession levels, and I'll pull it up really quick. So the unemployment rate for North Carolina in 2006 was 6.6%, which wasn't very good by 2006 standards, but by today's standard, sounds quite rosy. It peaked in 2010 at 12.7%, which is quite high, and then in 2012, it was about 10.8%. And more recently, each month that comes out, it's lower and lower, so now we're more in the neighborhood of 8% as a state. Salisbury had kind of a different trajectory, if you're kind of keeping along. Salisbury's unemployment rate peaked a year earlier than the state and was a full percentage point higher. And then since 2009, which was Salisbury's unemployment rate peak, it hasn't gone down hardly at all. So, the state seems to be recovering as a whole a lot more quickly than Salisbury is right now.
Right.
Another flaw with that number is that, as many of us know, that number doesn't even include people that have given up looking for work. So, and I think that's probably the most important group of the population to keep in mind, you know. If I'm wanting to have a conversation about unemployment, I want to talk about people who are looking for work, and they count in this number, and then people who have given up, and I want to know why, and they're not even counted in that number.
So, to expound it a little bit about who's counted and who's not counted unemployment numbers, who's actually counted?
People that are able to work and are looking for work are counted, and that number is divided by the total labor force, which is that number plus the people who are actually working. So, and, go ahead.
No, is that determined by people who are filing for unemployment at this moment? How would the local government be able to keep up with that?
That I don't know specifically. I don't think filing for unemployment is the way that people are counted, because there are several people that are looking for work who haven't filed for unemployment or are not eligible for unemployment. Say if they're fired, they're not eligible for unemployment. So, I think it's more a pure polling measure where they're making sort of broad estimates based on personal responses, but I'm actually not all that sure.
I understand. So, so like with Rowan County, in particular Salisbury here, the county seat, you know, it's been mentioned about the loss of textile manufacturing to business going overseas, and the economy being in a place of trying to replace industry.
Right.
Here locally, do you see that as being the major factor for rising poverty rates here?
That was immediately what, without doing any research, that's immediately what I had guessed, and here's what I found. The number of construction and manufacturing jobs in the Salisbury area, similar things happen to those numbers as the North Carolina as a whole numbers. So, this will take a second, just because I'm looking at a lot of numbers here. The number of construction jobs in Salisbury in 2008 was about 5,600, which seems like a pretty healthy number for a town the size of Salisbury, but it dropped to 4,500, so that's a loss of 1,100 jobs just in construction. The manufacturing numbers went from about 14,500 in 2006 to about 7,500 in 2012, and that's a huge drop. I mean, a 7,000 job drop in the town size of Salisbury is devastating. And you see, after that drop, you see rising poverty levels, you see dropping median family incomes, dropping median household incomes, skyrocketing youth poverty, and skyrocketing child poverty.
Right.
The state had a kind of a similar trend where they lost construction and manufacturing jobs, but the effect on median income and poverty level wasn't quite as devastating, and I'm not exactly sure why that is.
Right. So, you know, when we're talking about poverty, we're talking about lack of resources, lack of income, lack of resources to thrive, to survive in our modern society. So, now, as a bridge to, before we get into the positive side of things, what are some of the things that happen in a situation like this, where we have such poverty rates? What are some of the, if you can just list just a handful of, what's the effect of this in a community? How does this impact the community?
Right. I think what you're getting to is more a broader definition of poverty as an experience and as a state of living in our society. I think, you know, these numbers might help us figure out why, but what you're really talking about is, you know, what it all really means. And I think in a, and this is, you know, more my personal feeling and not a research-backed statement, but my personal feeling is that when I'm not working personally, and when I'm not meeting the needs, and when I don't have a little money in my pocket, I feel bad. I lose some self-worth. I, speaking just for myself, I isolate myself, I have less fun with my friends because I'm stressed, I get less motivated, I feel less a part of what's going on around me. And I think that's not an uncommon experience for someone who has to go through the very difficult transition of working and making a living and taking care of their family to depending on government programs or not making ends meet at all. So I think there's a very difficult psychological effect that affects any individual, but it also permeates through family life and through social structures. There's a lot of things that social psychologists kind of disagree on and debate, but the one thing that they kind of all agree on is that as a family or as a child, it's really tough being poor, and to not have the resources to meet basic needs, it's a lasting effect on many, many levels, nutritionally, psychologically, biologically, socially. These are all kind of things that, the longer you're struggling in poverty, the longer you're dealing with what you need, the longer those effects are going to have. You know, what that also means, you know, to put an optimistic spin on it, is that it's not, it's not all about the amount of money in your pocket. You know, we don't, we know oftentimes, you know, lack of resources also means weakening family relationships or social structures, or, you know, all that kind of stuff, but it doesn't have to mean that. What you have to do on the local level is look around for the assets that you do have, you know, and I'm not trying to be too rosy, but having a group of people organizing, like your group, is one of the ways to kind of combat one of the ills that often comes with poverty, you know. It combats that isolation, it combats that lack of self-esteem, that lack of energy, the lack of... of self-esteem, that lack of energy, the lack of connection that.
Right.
That often accompanies long experience.
What's interesting, cause so like with youth in a community like ours, uh, with the population, the different populations that we have, what are some of the ways that party poverty can affect a community like ours?
Uh, for children specifically?
Yeah, youth, uh, children and youth, I would say.
Okay. Um, I'll, I'll start with some of the stats that I found on, on youth and child poverty rates. So, um, going back to Salisbury, the, the peak unemployment rate was in two thousand and nine. Um, the peak youth and child poverty rates weren't until two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, um, and strangely, two thousand and twelve is actually a little bit higher. So, um, the child poverty rate, which is the poverty rate for people five years and younger, um, was thirty-eight point four percent in two thousand and twelve, um, and that's compared to the overall poverty rate of nineteen point four. Um, so what immediately you know is that, um, this is true for most places, uh, the age group with the largest proportion of people that are poor is children, um, which in a, in a very, you know, wealthy country relatively is, is kind of, um, kind of a shameful thing, uh, that the poorest people in our state are, um, five years and younger. Um, you know, there, there are all sorts of, uh, research that talks about what happens when you're a very poor child. Um, psychological effects like depression or anxiety, um, you know, there's research out that talks about, um, you know, having, having poor nutrition as a result, um, and that leading to long-term, uh, you know, blood pressure tens, tens and tens of years later, um, you know, brain functioning that's different, um, as a teenager, uh, you know, less motivation in school. I mean, it's, it's, it's hard to not find something bad that can happen to you as a child or a teenager, um, that isn't made worse, uh, by growing up poor. Um, the ways that you can kind of combat or, or moderate that, um, are things, some things cost money and, and some of these things don't. Um, one of the best and most effective ways, uh, to kind of moderate these effects are, um, early childhood education, preschool. Um, that costs money, you know, that's something that's hard for a local community to, to set up on its own. Uh, but another thing that, that really helps is just having an adult mentor, um, that's a positive influence. Um.
Right.
Having a large group of people, uh, that is a support, um, having a group of people that you feel like you belong to, um, and, uh, you know, that, that kind of thing goes a long way.
Now, uh, one of the things I want to interject though real quickly.
Sure.
There's a question, there's a comment, uh, question for the comments section. Uh, Dustin's gonna read it to us, but one thing I want to say is that I'm, I'm, you know, I'm connected with different people in the community, and you see some of the institutions like community trying to, different groups, nonprofits, uh, for-profits, uh, public institutions trying to address those in different ways. Uh, so I don't want to paint the picture that none of this is happening, you know, poverty is just like an onslaught in our community, nobody's doing anything. Uh, but this is really is a, a conversation, this among citizens, just a plain conversation about, hey, man, what is this poverty piece? What's this all about? You know?
Yeah.
And that's, I was gonna say that for our audience, uh, you know, cause I don't want to get in trouble.
No, no.
But Dustin, what's the question?
Yeah, um, just wanted to let the viewers know that, um, in the YouTube channel, uh, be sure to, um, put your comments, uh, or questions underneath the video, and, um, I'll get with you there. But there is a viewer that, uh, wanted to ask Joe a question about his stats. Um, just wondering how, um, how is it to determine who has given up looking for work?
That's a really great stat. Um, off the top of my head, I don't know the source of that information. I mean, I'd love to look it up and, and get back on that.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's, that's the best I got right now.
That's fine. And that, and that's it at this point, but, um, just wanted to interject that before we move on.
Yep.
Right. And also what I mentioned as well, we had quite a few other panels that were invited, but, uh, because of the weather, many of them were not able to make it. We actually had, uh, set for the director for the local DSS, uh, to be on board to give us some more local numbers and give us a good full picture what's happened locally, but she had to be prepared, uh, to go and get ready people, uh, for the inclement weather coming in. So we wanted her to be a part of the conversation. Uh, also, uh, brother Stanley Wilson, he's supposed to have been a part of the conversation, but I think he might have been, uh, uh, called away to some other action. So we, we did purpose to have a larger, more broader, diverse panel, but the inclement weather kind of sent people in different directions. So I was gonna let the audience know that we really tried to do that, and this is our first one ever, so hopefully we'll have a little grace, uh, given to us. So.
We gotta.
Just want to mention that.
We have another comment that just went, just came in, and I, I think it's, uh, related to what was, um, just said before the comment that I just mentioned before, but, uh, said that a social worker recently cited every time a child moves to a new school, he loses six months, uh, in being at grade level. Our econ, low, our low economy kids, uh, tend to move more often than others. So, um, that's just speaking from a social worker's point of view.
Yep, I, I believe that, and that's why, um, as, as I'm sure the social worker knows, but for the, but for the audience, um, for, it's not just low-income kids, but, uh, kids that experience some sort of, um, displacement either through, um, you know, a flood or something like that, and they can't stay at their home, or if their family loses their home and they're staying with, um, another family. Uh, there's federal legislation that requires, uh, the local school district to allow the child to stay in, uh, their home. So, uh, if there's, if there's a child that seems to be moving around a lot, if it's because their family doesn't really have a home, um, there is federal legislation that requires the school system to make, um, uh, make arrangements for that child to stay, to stay in their, in their home school. Um, because as, as, you know, the social workers bringing up, if you, the more you move schools, the, the more you get behind, and as we know with, um, each grade level, you kind of fall behind. It, it's a little more, uh, challenging to graduate on time before, uh, the school system kind of ages you out. So, uh, for the, for the previous question though, I, I just looked it up real quick, and, um, I was right that it, that it wasn't, the unemployment rate is not calculated through, um, unemployment insurance applications because that doesn't really capture everything. Um, the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics uses, um, a sixty thousand household sample. Um, so it's kind of like, uh, uh, taking a, taking a poll, uh, and they use those, uh, sample answers to, um, to estimate the, the total numbers. So, uh, if you're in a sample household and one member of your household says, um, I gave up looking work, for work because I looked for a year and couldn't find anything, which is the experience of a lot of people lately, um, then you're no longer counted as unemployed because you're not even counted as part of the labor force.
So, like, so I guess we should switch it up a little bit, cause, you know, it seemed to be like doom and gloom, you know, it was like, oh my gosh, this is really depressing, you know?
Yep.
And, uh, but you know, one of the things, you know, I'm learning even in my own community that people are very, can be very profoundly resilient in the face of, of a reality like that. Uh, where are you finding people being more strength, you know, showing strength, showing resilience in the light of poverty? Uh, what are some things that are happening in a positive direction, uh, to address that or to respond to that?
Sure. Um, I'll, I'll start again with some research and then go with some personal experience. Um, there, there are, there is research out there that I'm a little less familiar with, but there is research out there about, uh, uh, certain kids who, uh, and, and adults, uh, who used to be poor kids, um, who have figured out a way to be ultra-resourceful and ultra-resilient, um, and they end up with really great, like, critical thinking skills and they, uh, uh, are, are full of energy, you know, so it's, it's like a, it's like a two-sided coin, you know, uh, there, there, there are challenges there and then, and we deal with them in different ways depending on our own personal reserves and depending a lot on, you know, who's around us to help us out, I believe. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna plug a couple of articles that the Poverty Center published, uh, over the last year in the N and O. Um, uh, we, we do talk about gloom and doom a lot, um, but the last couple of articles, we tried to write about people who were doing really amazing things and communities that were doing really amazing things. And one experience that I had was in, uh, Goldsboro, North Carolina, where, um, the church community there was very tight with each other. Um, and, uh, there was one, um, homeless shelter slash food pantry that, you know, a lot of people would look at it and, and say, you know, oh, that's, um, you know, that, that's too bad that we have to have this, or, um, they would see it as a, I don't know, kind of like a stopgap or, or a Band-Aid, but I spent a few days there and, um, it was one of the most amazing places I had ever been. Um, it was full of people that had known each other for a really long time. Um, it was full of people that, um, had homes and, and didn't need to use a food pantry anymore, but came back just because, uh, it was a beautiful place, um, and because there were a lot of beautiful relationships there. Um, and it's very hard to know that place and, and look at it as anything other than an amazing, um, asset and, and special resource, but it, but it took a long time to build.
Right. Yeah, that's, that's interesting. So, so is a poss, is it fair to say that that a part of resilience in the face of poverty in a community, uh, rural poverty, uh, it's important that people not remain in their silos in a community, but that they find ways to collaborate with each other, whether it's churches, nonprofits, local government? There has to be more bridge builder, right? Would you say that, that's the case?
I think that's exactly right. Um, you know, to, to use extreme examples, you know, a person who, um, you know, spends all of their time, uh, within their homes, um, not working or, or not, not being connected to their community, it's, it's hard for them to solve the poverty issue on their own, um, even, even on a very personal level. Uh, and, and a lot of the, the downfalls or the, or the pitfalls that come with poverty, um, you know, they, they go kind of hand in hand with, with isolation. Um, so, you know, my personal opinion is that, um, community connection is, is really the, uh, kind of the, the building block, um, of, of addressing, um, a lot of poverty issues for sure. Um, there are, there are ways that, um, you have to go bigger. I mean, you know, we, uh, you know, the, the town of Salisbury or the town of Elizabeth City where I'm from, uh, themselves couldn't change, uh, some of the, you know, statewide, um, policies or, or economic trends all by themselves, um, but they can really combat a lot of, um, a lot of the ill effects, um, by acting together, I think.
How, how do they, in, you know, communities like, you know, like ours and others of our size, you know, there's this storyline, there's this narrative that says that, uh, you know, you hear about like the rugged individual.
Mm-hmm.
You know, a person pulling himself up by their own bootstraps.
Right.
But just by what you're describing, communities that have been resilient and been able to resist or learning how to work together in the midst of poverty, it seemed to defy that story. It seems like we can't do this alone as individuals, but we really have to pull together and not just as an individual pulling ourselves by my own bootstrap, but, uh, as a collective, as a community coming together, uh, pulling each other up.
Right. And I really think both of them are true. Um, I'm gonna go back to my Goldsboro experience and say I, I could identify two or three people that were instrumental in, in putting that shelter together who, um, you know, if, if you were, if you were the type to analyze people by how much they pulled themselves up by their bootstraps, they really had some bootstraps. Um, at the same time, uh, they didn't raise the money all by themselves, you know, they didn't mint their own twenty-dollar bills in their basement, you know, they, they had to go out and ask around, man, and they, and they didn't put the mortar and the, and the bricks on themselves. They, they asked for a bunch of volunteers, you know, so it was, um, you know, it, it often takes, you know, a pretty extraordinary motivational force in, in the, in the form of a person or two or a group that, um, you know, has the work ethic that we hear about all the time when we hear about these poverty issues, but, um, they didn't, I don't know that anyone's building, um, homeless shelters or communities by themselves just cause it's, it's sort of an impossibility, isn't it?
Right. So like on, you know, on another note, aside from like, uh, services that alleviate like, like dire poverty, uh, but, uh, in going to the, into the world of economic development, you hear that word a lot, right? You hear people say that the, the key is the solution is economic development, you know, building, uh, entrepreneurial, uh, you know, a business culture, you know, uh, incubators in a community. Uh, I, I hear that conversation taking place as well. Uh, do you, what do you think about that conversation where people are having that in, in, in light of poverty?
I think it's, and this is kind of putting on an economist's hat that I, that I haven't worn too often, but, um, I think it's a, a pretty vital piece. Uh, it can be, if, if the only answer to the question, you know, how is our community gonna get out of poverty? Uh, if the only answer to that question is, well, why don't you just start some businesses on your own, um, that's a pretty, uh, it's, it's lacking in, in its, in its comprehensiveness. You know, there, uh, there's a, there is a beautiful side to this kind of, um, community development perspective, which says like, oh, there, there are assets in this community, there are people in this community that, um, would be great business people and know what the community wants and needs, um, they just need kind of a startup, and, and I think that's great. Um, on the other hand, it's, it's, it's really hard to know what another community needs. Uh, and, and, and so if, if we're talking about, um, state-level policy that is, uh, designed to tell Salisbury like how to run a business or who should run it or, or what they should do, or, uh, say like, oh, here are the type of jobs you need and then throw it in there, um, that, that seems pretty difficult to, to make work. Um.
Right, cause, you know, it's interesting, cause.
Go ahead.
Oh, no, no, go ahead. You said we're seeing a lot of what now?
Well, I, I think we're seeing a lot of, um, incentive packages to businesses that, um, are relatively high-tech jobs or, uh, financial services that, um, generate jobs in local communities, and that's one way to do it, but it doesn't really match up with, um, the populations that are currently in North Carolina that need a lot of work. And what I mean is people that have been working textiles or manufacturing, um, it's a lot harder for them to take a lot of the jobs that are being created through state incentive programs. So if Google comes and, and sets up a data center in Rowan, some people will be able to work there, and that's great. Um, but a lot of people aren't able to work there, and that's kind of, uh, an example of, um, when, uh, you know, community economic development comes from the wrong place. Um, if it came from Rowan and someone in Rowan's like, I've got this great idea, it's gonna really work, um, and they found some sort of funding for it, uh, that's, that's a little, it, it fits a little better, a little more naturally, I think.
So, so.
Can I join in?
Yeah.
Sorry. Um, that kind of relates with a, a comment and a question here of, from Tanya. She said, uh, with the inability to find jobs, uh, has that been an increase in entrepreneurship within our state? I've all seen stats where the cause of the inability to find those jobs has, has that birthed entrepreneurs?
I don't, I don't know. Um, I would, I would really like to hear the story of that, um, but I, but I haven't found that story yet. Um, uh.
But what, but what you were saying was that if, if those jobs were from within, things would blossom a whole lot more. Is that what you?
I, I did work with, um, and the Poverty Center had done some work with, uh, the town of, um, Roper, uh, where their idea was to, um, take advantage of a kind of a longstanding historical tradition of, uh, uh, baking is really awesome. Uh, I think it was peanut, peanut-based like kind of dessert bars or something. Like they, they had this group of, of, of older women who just like made the best, you know, dessert bars in, in the world, you know, and, and they believed it, and maybe it was true. Um, and, and, and what they had been trying to do, and I think they're gonna be pretty successful at it, um, is to create kind of a, uh, public-private partnership where, um, the town has, uh, the space and the facilities, um, and. and members of the community are trained to, to make these, uh, these desserts. And then, uh, members of the community are trained to, to sell them and market them. That's the kind of community economic development that I find really exciting, um, because it's not a, it's not a top-down kind of, well, we've decided that computers are what everyone's gonna work on and good luck learning computers. It's more, um, what does this community do well, uh, and what energizes the community? That's a, it's a very, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, just going on that thought, just, you know, it sounds like communities that have, that maybe our size or just a little larger or even smaller, they've asked themselves a set of questions about what do we do well? What are our gifts?
Right. I think, I think that's the best place to start. I mean, you're, you, you kind of called me out a couple of times about being doom and gloom and I, and I totally agree, that I often come to this conversation with doom and gloom statistics. But I think, uh, the place where you, where you start is what do we have and what do we do well? Uh, and that can be the type of skills that I talked about in Roper, but it could also be, um, a place in the neighborhood that, uh, seems to be a place where people gather, whether it's meant for that or not. Or, uh, people in the neighborhood that have been around a while and, and know some folks. Those are, those are assets, um, from a social worker perspective, for sure.
So like, so like a good community question would be, uh, whether it's a church community or synagogue or, uh, a mosque or just a collective of, a social group that people connect with each other. What are some good questions that people might ask themselves?
As far as how to, how to deal with this poverty situation?
Yes.
Yeah. I would, I would, I would start by identifying where the, where the problem is, is, is maybe worst. There, there's always a, a really difficult question of, of how much you can do and, and the answer is always something short of everything. And, 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 and that's, it's very frustrating. So you, you kind of have to take a look around and assess, you know, who, who has it the worst? And, and maybe that means who's the youngest, um, because we know, uh, our youngest are our most vulnerable right now. My next step would say, um, what happens when, um, when poverty is, is long-lasting? And, and we know it's, um, you know, it hurts our nutrition, it hurts us socially, it hurts us educationally. And, and I feel like that kind of points you into where, where you should go first, you know? Uh, and, and some of those, uh, challenges are, uh, more difficult and more long-term than others.
So we should be asking ourselves as a community like, how can we best protect our babies?
Yeah, uh, that, that's one. You know, how are, are our kids, you know, getting to kindergarten, you know, knowing what they should know and ready for what they should be ready for? Do we, do we have a group that, um, allows us to connect and talk about it? Might be an even earlier question. You know, and, and from an organizing perspective, uh, you know, maybe the first challenge you take on isn't, um, you know, solving a problem that's as old as our country is. But maybe, um, picking a, a pretty measurable goal that maybe is a step along the way, experiencing a victory and then, and then moving on from there.
And, uh, you know, so, yeah, I'll, uh, so again, I, you know, I want to apologize to our audience. We, uh, we plan on having a broader panel, uh, but we're very grateful, uh, for you, uh, Joe, Polish, to come in and chat with us about poverty, you know, from a state level, uh, to our local level and just give us an accurate picture. And also gives us signs of, you know, glimmers of hope, of people, uh, building communities that are, are learning to resist and, and lift themselves up together. I really appreciate that.
Of course.
And so, uh, you know, and again, uh, I wish, uh, Keena Foster was here and the director of DSS was here and, uh, Mr. Wilson was here, but that's okay. Again, I always have a part too to poverty.
We made it.
Yeah, we made it. So one of the things that we, you know, we're trying to do is simply raise awareness, to have a broader conversation among our citizens and hopefully like this YouTube, you know, people may be like, Jenny, yes, you know, I agree with everything you're saying. And there might be people like, man, that's so narrow, that's so, you know, uh, off-base. And, and we're even grateful for those conversations because that means that people are talking about it. And, uh, so we want to encourage people to get involved in local efforts. One of the things that we're gonna do on our Facebook page and also our YouTube channel, we're gonna post direct links to, uh, the local DSS, also the local economic development, uh, groups, uh, in our community. So you can learn about how our community in Roan and also in Salisbury, the county seat, how people are organizing and making plans to address, uh, the recession and the poverty, uh, rates to our community. So we want to encourage everybody to get involved at a local level and, uh, to address the challenges and, and also to imagine possibilities in our community and how we can solve them together. Also encourage people to think, to speak out and to take action and to volunteer and to donate where they can. So I do have, uh, anything else Dustin?
Uh, there's, there's one, one question, um, that they wanted to ask at the end. Uh, it says, uh, looks like it's directed towards Joe. "With all the studies on poverty and its causes, what studies are you aware of that addresses revolving, uh, this, the large racial, cultural and gender gaps that, uh, exist in the poverty rates?"
So the question is basically, why, why do those exist?
Uh, more of, I think they were wanting to know like what are some other studies that, um, you're aware of that address some of those racial and cultural and gender, gendered type, uh, needs, gaps there, rather?
Off the top of my head, I don't know, uh, a study that, uh, that solves that riddle. As, as far as, uh, the list of causes that generate, um, those gaps. You know, if I had to go out on a limb and it's, and it's kind of a, a, a treacherous limb, I, I would, I would acknowledge, um, that there are elements of, um, uh, you know, present day personal discrimination, whether it's explicit or not, mixed with, uh, historical, uh, systemic discrimination as far as how, um, how we've divided resources and how we've, um, dedicated our time and energy. Those are very basic and very broad, um, but I, but I think they're, they're quite true. If, uh, if this person is interested in, in reading some studies, um, you know, my job is as a researcher, so I can, I can find them, uh, if they want to leave.
Right, and what you can do is, if you could, Joe, you can just send me some links and, uh, about that, looking at that issue. And, uh, I can post them on our, on our website or Facebook. Uh, but we're about to close out, it's only the last part of hour. Again, uh, I want to thank you, Joe, for, uh, participating in this and also for Ms. Foster, or Ms. Grubb, rather, Ms. Keena Grubb, uh, executive director of Roan Helping Ministry, she fell out because of the technology there. Uh, we'll get that right next time. But, uh, I just want to give a quick announcement. First, I want to thank our audience who sat in on our first, uh, virtual town hall meeting. We appreciate all those who sat and watched us dialogue. And, uh, we thank you for your patience and your grace. And, uh, we thank for all our commentators and, and questioners, you know, people who posted questions and all those who shared or retweeted or, uh, shared the Facebook status and to let people in on the conversation that we're having it. Uh, I said, I have a couple of, uh, quick announcements from our lead organizer, Emily Perry. And just want to put this out there, uh, we want to, just throw an invitation out there for everybody to attend, uh, upcoming Pathways to Power training. Uh, it's an intensive leadership training conducted in partnership with Democracy NC. Uh, it will be held at Mount Zion, uh, Missionary Baptist Church, uh, which is located at nineteen twenty Shirley Avenue in Salisbury on March twenty-second. Uh, for additional contact information, uh, you can contact, uh, Ms. Linda Suck of Democracy NC or you can just email us or Facebook us and we'll put you with some more information. Uh, our number is three three six eight seven zero two one six eight. And also lastly, I just want to, uh, encourage everyone who's interested in the work of Roan concerned citizens uh, to meet with us on second, on every second and fourth Tuesday at six-thirty. We meet at East Square Artworks at one twenty, uh, East Industry. Please join us as we move, uh, to educate and mobilize our community, as we educate each other, rather, and to mobilize each other into the community. And, and again, I want to thank you, Joe, for, uh, joining us and, uh, thanks to everyone that joined us tonight. Look forward to our next, uh, town hall meeting in a couple of months. Uh, thank you. Good night.
Night.
Thank you.